All right, I'd like to call the words. The meeting is a Louisburg Board of School Directors. Please drive with polite visit.
United States of America.
All right, I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. Those who are joining us in person and here in person, I can't talk, all right? And those joining us via Zoom. A couple of quick announcements. The board did meet an executive session for approximately two hours on July 25th to discuss several safety matters. The board also met an executive session the evening of August 4th for approximately an hour and a half to discuss a personnel matter as well as a safety matter. And we do have all the board members present tonight. The majority of us present here in the room and one joining us via Zoom. So all board members are in attendance for the meeting this evening. At this point, I would like to open the floor for any citizens' comments to the board on agenda items. As usual, this is our, the time of the meeting where the board is all ears. We're here to listen. We're here to take the comments from the public on any agenda items that are listed for the special session this evening. For those who would like to submit a comment, we assume we are asking for those to be typed out into the box on Zoom. The board will not be answering questions tonight. There have been several chances for their community to ask questions and have those questions answered, as well as continuing to ask questions. Dr. Polenchak did send out a communication today with a link for additional questions to be asked through that method. But tonight, we're just kind of all ears, listening to the community on the agenda items if anybody would like to address the board. John, I believe you'll be reading the comments that we're receiving. They will be read to the board in the order that they're received. So John, go ahead.
Okay. Well, it's a question. So unfortunately, we cannot answer questions this evening. As I mentioned in the chat box, we can only take comments, please. Thank you. Dr. Polenchak will be checking our Google form that's online through the website for any comments.
The reason for that, a lot of the questions that we're receiving are very specific questions, either a building level question or specific to an individual student, rather than taking the time this evening to address those with the entire community. You know, we feel it's more appropriate to address those individually through the administration. So again, we're not trying to cycle questions or not address those. They will be addressed. Starting tomorrow, the administration will be reaching back out to answer those questions. So again, at this point, we're just looking for some comments to the board, getting some feedback for the items that we'll be voting on this evening.
Would it be okay if we read the question? I mean, it's not going to be answered.
Yes.
It can still be read and we can hear it and...
Someone's asking for the procedure to enroll in e-school or how to withdraw their student from LASD to enroll in homeschooling. Again, you know, folks can reach out to the administration. We do have a question of what will be the metrics for closing a classroom or closing a school or the district as a whole? Are we addressing the PIA double A false sports in the statement made by Governor Wolf? That is a question again. We cannot provide an answer this evening, but just reading it to the board. Live streaming of classes is available in other nearby districts. It's disappointing this is not offered within LASD. And a question about enrolling in e-school. A question about posting an FAQ to withdraw in order to homeschool. We can look into that. Questions about the assurances of the student desk guards and the sanitation equipment arriving in time. Someone is very disappointed that we had several months to come up with remote synchronous program and weren't able to, given other districts were. The board is spineless for not taking questions live. This session is pointless. Other school districts are providing laptops or Chromebooks. Will LASD do the same if schools are forced to close? And on page 22 of Health and Safety Plan, it refers to students only being three feet apart. Asking the first day of school. And they're hoping teachers have been supported in their aims to improve online education. Can the district offer some examples of teacher support? Why won't teachers be wearing masks and only face shields? Someone has not received any information about our children's classes. And bus schedule, a question about bus schedules, they will be going out tomorrow. Question about e-school and virtual learning following the curriculum. And it's pointless to have a meeting indicating you're not answering my questions. Statement about laptop distribution. Question about whether it will be determined when teachers will wear masks and when shields will be used. And this is a train wreck. And this person is very disappointed that we are not offering live streaming of classes. We feel that our district should have that as an option. The procedure for applying for e-school is not transparent. Seem you are hiding the procedure. All parents need to know that they have to request applications from the guidance counselors and are due August 13. Question about providing bus service for pre-K kids. Teachers should be given microphones so that they can be comfortable while speaking, while wearing masks, so their voices can be heard around the room. Question regarding kids bringing backpacks, lunches, and personal belongings. And question about free lunches. Comment, thank you for all your time and effort. We really do appreciate all that you're doing. Thank you for that kind comment. Has consideration been given to kindergartners enrolling for a half day or only a few days a week? Thank you for your hard work during this difficult time. We know there are no perfect solutions. We'd be very grateful for more information and more transparent communication. Let's see here. Question regarding specials, if they're still having specials such as gym. Comment, thank you for all you're doing. Keep up all the good work. God bless you. Call today about the e-school threshold. We know answer about where we are with regards to the e-school threshold. Given the recent spike in Union County, should we adopt a plan such as one in Seal and Grover Melton, which allows students to attend part-time? Comment, I must add that I truly expected to hear from our school board members to have questions asked. Thanks for your work. Every parent is concerned about their child's families and futures. We're excruciating over the decision we must make. To chuckle does not give the sense you understand where we are as a community. Question regarding the due date for e-learning applications. Is it August 13th? So perhaps we can publish an FAQ on the website about that. Thank you to Dr. Polenchak for her leadership in this unprecedented time. I am sure I can speak for many parents that we felt LASD was extremely unprepared in March, and we are hopeful that she will help principals further explore the best technology for our teachers and students in the event of a shutdown. Our teachers do not seem like they have any more information than the community, which is concerning. Let's be sure to support our teachers as they are on the front lines with students. I am surprised and disappointed that more planning has not been done to take advantage of outdoor space for learning, mask breaks, lunches, et cetera. It seems outdoor spaces can be created to appreciate on hot days. Getting kids outdoors is consistently something I've read our school should be doing whenever possible. Question, I would still like to know whether students will spend any significant amount of time outdoors this fall at Kelly. Outside is the safest place to be, and yet no one here ever mentions that as an option LASD could explore. A comment that we are, they are disappointed that the email went out at 5:15. As a parent and alum of LASD, I'm incredibly disappointed that a district that considers ourselves and has been recognized as one of the best in the state does not seem to be as well-prepared as we could be. I recognize your work is difficult, but it seems as though we have been on a one-way train and have not fully included the thoughts of many community members with regard to the school options and technology. I love this district, but I'm struggling to believe that we are prepared to fully reopen. All mask breaks should occur outdoors as recommended by Allison Hess of Geisinger. And a question about sex. The community can, should be partnering with entities like the Miller Center and Heater Center to spread out students for activities, specials, et cetera. There should be more creative answers like this at play here. It's unfortunate that we can't plan ahead of time with the meeting email received two hours ago. That person thought the, that was a great idea. Please consider having lunch in classrooms, not in shared spaces like a cafeteria. Any comments from the web, Jen, that you wanted to?
There are older comments.
We have a person who is disappointed that the questions they prepared for the panel of experts were not addressed.
The proposed, this is a comment. I'll read the name and the street. These are comments that were coming in on the initial Google form that was on our main page. So we're including that in front of the point of the board agenda when it was live. Because that was probably where people thought that they could make their comments. So we just want to make sure that we're respecting their positions. So this is from Samantha Pearson at 200 North Third Street. The proposed partial masking policy seems like a really, a real sticking point. All the more, so a combination of the plan to go ahead with contact sports is reported in today's paper. Why would we significantly expand exposure to an entire community just so a subset of students can engage with athletes from other school districts? And then why would we allow students who are having... Why would we allow students who are having so many more interactions, both the competitive athletes, but also really every student coming through the door, to take their masks off around each other indoors? Let's compare this process to the guidelines for restaurants. And this individual just continues to go on and talk about that juxtaposition. The problem with extended periods of time with the same people indoors is the distancing lines of getting undone by aerosols floating in space. That is exactly the scenario that calls for people to be wearing masks. Anything else is unfair to students, staff, and teachers. Every move to increase opportunities for transition in the community should be accompanied by a greater emphasis on the insistence on keeping transmission contained by other means. With ever more interactions and contacts in the offing of... With the school and the university openings, we need to be even better about our other containment strategies, masking, distancing, and hygiene, and not filling laxness into our plans. Miriam Bala of 203 Lamp Lane Lane. Hi, after attending through regulars for all three kids, unfortunately, I'm still very confused. I do not want as many kids to school, and we decide to choose e-school options so far. For e-school, school district, you didn't provide us with enough information. Everything is confusing right now. If you choose teachers outside LASD, will they teach the kids live? Kindly explain everything before you send survey to the parents. I'd like to choose e-school, but I have no information of how it works. I have one kid in high school and one in Lindtown, too. The band and orchestra teachers have no information yet. The kids will be able to continue their band and orchestra with e-learning. Thank you. Andrea Featherstone, 281 Low Street. While attending the middle school town hall, the superintendent stated the desk would not be wiped down between classes because Clark's wife's take 20 minutes to work. My husband is a general manager at a restaurant. He uses peroxide solution that works right away. Could you look into something like that? I'm concerned that we're letting it up to 12-year-olds to wash their hands. Krista Smith, 819 Buffalo Road. Extremely disappointed by the seeming lacking of planning by the school board and administration of the summer. Completely unacceptable to not release a plan by now. It seems like you off put the least amount of effort in what you could get away with. This is not the fault of the teachers or even the principals. I believe this blame falls mostly on the board and the superintendent. Why wait for the CSI U meeting to come up with a plan? It's been four months since school ended, four months. When I asked if there was a plan for air conditioning in the buildings, the answer was that something like that costs too much and takes too long to plan. You had four months, and I find it hard to believe that the district is that poor. We're thinking about the amount of taxes we all pay. Now the teachers and the students are going to be stuck in hot, stubby rooms, wearing masks with pitiful fans, pitiful fans blowing around the same junk oil. No filtration, no airflow. Final plans haven't been decided for possible outdoor classes or transportation. Again, what did you do all summer? Sit there and hope it would get better before the beginning of school? Darcy Slovata, 121 Darling Court. I appreciate all your efforts that have been put into the reopenings of school safely. I'm uncomfortable with sending my five-year-old son for in-person classes under the current plan. I was wondering, though, when he goes in, will he only be exposed to his teacher and the others in the class, or kids from other classes, too? It seems to me that if each class could stay together as a pod, that would reduce the spread. Thank you. Melissa Waldrich, 110, Maxwell Circle. Would there possibly be any consideration for delayed start to school? If we started later around September 8th, there would be time to gather data from other school districts who started on time to see how in-safe person instruction would be. Thank you. Kristen, the last name, 1495 Smokey Town Road. Was the survey regarding which option families were choosing sent? I was part of the three-town hall meetings in which it was stated the survey would be coming out 7:31 was it sent? If so, I did not receive it. Also, my children's friends are saying they will send class placements out before. How's that possible? If the district is truly committed to placing an LASD teacher with e-school group, if numbers allow classes, lists should not have been made yet. Placement should be on hold until the survey is completed. What happens when a teacher needs to get pulled for an e-school and kids are rearranged? The board administration should be aware that the constant contradictions like this one have many of us who have been committed to send their kids in person, very concerned that there's, there really is no plan or any communication with the district. Please do better. We don't have much time left. Emily Stowe, 318 South 14th Street. I can't even begin to believe you are considering allowing masks to be removed at any time then lunch. Sports competitions. What is the point of questions if you are shipping kids all over Central PA? Julie Rowe, 812 Terrace Drive. Our school districts have a robust process of issuing school laptops to students six through 12, considering all of the research related to reducing class size and social distancing protocol. I'm very disappointed to know that our district is not more seriously considering a high-grade model of instruction for older students. Not only would this alleviate pressure on each school day by trying to fit all students safely within classes, but by reducing the numbers on a daily basis, it would affect, allow students to, more opportunity for safe socialization. Teachers would also feel at ease knowing they could spread students safely in classrooms, perhaps considering alternating days of attendance for court classes and special, and teach specials remotely. Remember, we do not want to be the district that pushed up on the end and ended up creating a situation that risks the lives of many in our community. Please consider some alternatives to the five-day-a-week return to instruction until you can truly see how this experiment, in quotations, is going to work. Tracy McLean, 1407 Way of Hendry. My granddaughter, safety is my number one concern, as with all the children of the LASD. If I can, with the assistance of the educators of LASD, I would love to help Zero with second grade education. These are very stressful times for my granddaughter. Love school. We do ABC Mouse and other educational websites, but school is what she looks forward to. I know that together, the LASD administration will make a decision that is the safest for faculty and students. I just pray the parents have input on these decisions. Samantha Pearson, 200 North Third Street. Thank you for posting the recorded Q and A with health experts about the school reopening plans. I particularly appreciated their clear statement that any mask breaks should take place, obviously, outdoors, and that's the community's behavior outside of schools is crucial to the success of the reopening effort. Key highlights, it's important for people to recognize that we're really in this together as a community. And while there are a lot of things that need to occur at the school district level because we know that the students are coming back, there are a lot of steps to take to mitigate that risk. It really is a community effort, and while schools can take a lot of really good and strong precautions, but what we do outside of the school day and how our children interact is what hap, and what happens is just as important. In order for our students to successfully be able to return, the more we can try to mitigate any risk, the more successful that return will be. But if we start getting more lax in some of these areas, the out, or outside of school, some of these things are becoming more lax, it will be cer, it will certainly influence and impact. It is important, if those mask breaks are going to occur, that they occur in structured and supervised, obviously outdoors. Definitely would have to be outside of that six-feet area and really make sure that it is occurring and that there are additional steps in place. So again, ensuring the hand washing and other pieces as part of that activity. Again, for exercise, obviously outdoors. The school district would like to participate in a new regional community initiative to help with the first part of that. There is a Spotlight Orange campaign, which includes public messaging and current people to implement public health mitigation measures, a pledge that individuals and businesses can take in ways to help further encourage others through signage and social media. Public health is key to keeping our economy and our schools open. And a link to Spotlight Orange. Brian Fritz, the website, I'm sorry, just an email address. The website indicates that the proposal of any plan will be available for public view after August 3rd. Where can that document be found? Thank you. Sarah Bolton, 412 South 19th Street. Recent daily item article A5 outlined line mountain school district's plan, which is a hybrid in this case. Students with the last name A through L would attend two days in person and three days online. Alternatively, M through Z would attend the different two days and three online. Why is Lewisburg not taking this approach to minimize the amount of kids in the schools? It seems like it would be much easier to social distance with online half, the students and the schools at any given time. Brian Smith, 185 Sunny Side Drive. I must say, I'm very discouraged by the, in the decision to provide faculty, staff, face shields, and move traditional mask. Although the PA health guidelines allow for plastic face covering, CDC guidelines advise against it. CDC does not recommend use of face shields for normal, everyday activities or, or as a substitute for masks. Shield should be used in conjunction with a mask. The purpose of the face shield is to protect the wearer primarily with clot masks, more effective with preventing spread than a facial gel. My wife, who is a tenured veteran pediatrician with Geisinger, the decision does not sit well with us. It all goes against everything that my wife's superiors at Geisinger have instructed them upon. Our children desperately want to return to school, and while we are appreciative of the efforts of the staff on the board, this new development is giving our family cause. Further, it has been a struggle to get information regarding e-school, charter school, homeschool, et cetera. Ten days passed before I received a reply from Ms. Moser about alternative options. The generic email contained little information, no forms, and no direction. It's been two years since my initial email, and I still have no idea of enroll my child in e-school. And yet, according to the proposed, proposed of the discussed on August 6th, the last day you enroll for e-school is August 12th. Please help us. Please tell us how. Indulge Rama, 175 Mountain View Road. Here are some more links that indicate that small children are just as likely to have and therefore spread infection. The Georgia summer camp incident is relevant to LASD. Masks were used at children's select and communal cabins. This is similar to not wearing masks inside the classroom. Six feet is irrelevant because it's airborne disease. One single infected student could produce infectious aerosols that could soon occupy the volume of the classroom. Since there will be no testing, the only way you will come to know is when adults start falling sick. There will be a period of confusion during which nobody will be sure what's going on. Some older people may die. This is quite predictable. No country is tempted to open schools while the virus is raging out there. In fact, there is an outbreak in Union County as one type. Go online, come back when the virus is under control. Any other action would be irresponsible to the community and your older teachers. There's a question there. Steven McCain, 200 North Third. The document entitled "Planning for Reopening Schools for the 2021 School Year" and dated August 6th, 2020, states the following on page 78 of Classroom or Office Has Desk Received Departed. Then masking and other mitigation strategies will be enforced. The document fails to resolve the converse question of the classroom where office has desks seating more than six feet apart or masks still required for students. The report on states on page 7, all teachers and staff will be required to wear face coverings when in school, and masking and mitigation strategy that every individual can do to protect other people. By unambiguously requiring teachers and staff to wear masks, they will be doing their part to protect students, but apparently LASD does not expect students to protect others. Without a clear statement from LASD that masking is required for students and will be enforced all the time in the building, LASD is endangering the health and lives of students, teachers, and staff. And there are questions. Kathy Hafer, 4008 County Line Road. What will the cost be to tax, taxpayers if students would be going to e-school and cyber school? Why are we not using our Lewisburg teachers to teach in person and online simultaneously or just online classes? Surrounding districts have listened to their parents and are providing this option. They will save so much. How much will our taxes increase because our district will not compromise? And Melanie McCain, 1397 Smokey Town Road. Mask breaks should occur outside, disinfecting desks in the classroom should happen, and eating lunch outside or in the classroom. Went over it. Classroom. Just pulling the comment over. Is best. Teachers should also be wearing masks too. They can carry this virus too. My family is committed to coming back to school. Please make these changes. That's all I have there.
Okay, we have some additional comments here. One person is commenting about perceived lack of support from principals and the board until Dr. Polichak arrived. A person has a question about school lunches for e-school and cyber school. This person says, "As a professional in another educational institution, I appreciate the difficulty of this situation. The guidelines, recommendations, and situations change frequently." Okay, this person feels that this is not constructive at all, and there are conversations that have been going on in the community, and they would appreciate answers to questions. A person asking a question about notifications in the event of a positive case. Asking a question about if filters will be installed. Disappointing that the health and safety plan does not reflect guidance by the experts from EVAN and Geisinger about secondary disinfection. Let's see here. We seem to be the only district not providing anything to students such as technology or PPE, requiring fundraiser funds to be used in mass instead of possibly tech for those that would need it in case of a possible shutdown. It seems you are not addressing low-income needs in our district. Those that are sending kids more than likely are the ones that could not choose e-school or homeschooling. I am hoping that the district will include many outdoor breaks for all. It's draining mentally and physically to speak through a mask and adjust to limiting behaviors and being in altered settings. I wonder how we expect children to adjust going to school eight hours a day, five days a week, as of August 24th. They have a one-to-day introduction, then start full-time in the heat of summer with no air conditioning and limited ventilation while wearing masks, re-acclimating to social circumstances, learning new rules that have health-threatening consequences if breached, and have to negotiate the concentration of school requires after five months off. Add to that kindergarten, fourth, sixth, and ninth graders, who are all adjusting to a brand-new school that they may know very little about as they walk across the threshold. I appreciate there was not an opportunity for the usual orientation, but allowing one day for them to learn the ropes on top of these changes seems insufficient. Another person said, "Even teachers seem to have no idea what's happening, and there's no transition plan when it all falls apart. How is this possible with two weeks left?" Many people seem to be very upset about the district reopening plan. Perhaps we should punt, start the year after Labor Day, and come up with a plan the community and parents approve, as the governor stated, the school districts will do. Question about a state recommendation. Let's see here. We want to thank you for your ongoing efforts at these very difficult times. We feel as though you've communicated a plan, and we understand it will need to be flexible with guidelines changing every day. You have provided choices for those who want to keep their children at home and families like ours who look forward to having the back-face-to-face instruction. Keep up the great work. Let's see here. Let's see. The Federal Cares and Stabilization Fund allowed for HVAC to address health and safety concerns and has been available since May. The previous statement regarding the lack of planning for hot classrooms is valid. Even after this year, you need to gain this funding to provide required HVAC out of schools. Question being asked to continue to sign up for e-school throughout the year.
Jen, sorry, I'm gonna stop you there for a second. One thing that I did not announce, normally we do it in-person when people, we do it, I had it, we had it on the document that Jen was reading. The comments that are being made, if we could please have people state their name and address, we can follow up with these questions. If we have, you know, their name and address and kind of contact, we are able to follow up with those people, those individuals, to get those questions answered. So I'm not sure, I can't read it from here, but I'm not sure if people are stating those. I apologize, I didn't clearly announce that in the beginning for Zoom, but if people could state their name and address as well with their comments, that would allow us to be able to reach back out, you know, if necessary, so.
And we can, we can take these comments and match them up with the addresses that were entered into Zoom and provide them to the administration for further follow-ups.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So, let's see here. Disappointment with the options. This person is disappointed with the options and looking for schools to be air-conditioned. And questions about face shields. Let's see here. This person says, "Please do not make our children in community the experiment of in-person classes five days a week." This person is asking when questions will be answered. Let's see here. To answer this question, we will do our best to answer questions in writing, via email or by phone. This person is not a fan of Dr. Polichak. Let's see here. Parents and families want to make a return to school successful. The board administration has not yet rallied the community to help. There should be a call to the community to rally together, driving kids to school where possible, donating camp chairs or tarps for outdoor spaces, offering alternative learning spaces. The community wants to help. The school district should engage us. This person is concerned about 504 and IEP student plans. That's all the comments I have so far.
Any others?
No, he's got a lot, as I just had people.
Okay.
Yep, okay.
All right, with that, hearing no other comments, we will move on then to the special session, the voting items this evening. The first one is health and safety for Dr. Polichak.
Understanding that a number of people are asking questions and that all of these questions are understandable. We will get back to, we can look up your addresses and reach out to you via telephone or email in the coming days. Please understand the volume and the fact that we are working on developing this plan and all of the nuanced details that go into the development of the plan. The two documents that are presented tonight, the first is the LASD plan to reopen schools for in-person learning this year. That document outlines what the process has been since I joined the district July 1st. Planning was occurring prior to me coming, but that document will also explain that we did not receive the guidance that we needed from the Department of Education on how to and what elements needed to be included in the plan. Furthermore, the Department of Education was consulting with the Department of Health on specific guidelines for schools, and that was not available until July 16th. Part of our planning also included talking to in regular weekly meetings, and even additional email chains are paralyzed in the other school districts and the Central Susquehanna Intermediate Unit. So, you know, we are very well aware of what other school districts are doing. It's important to note that other school districts may have different resources available. They may have different staffing levels. They may have different ways in which they assign their staff, and some of that would be captured in collective bargaining agreements. So all those things are different. And understand too that every school district is struggling with this as they're starting to work with all the details of putting their plans in motion. They are coming up against many of the obstacles that they couldn't have expected, and they're reaching out, as we are to, to our colleagues to see how they're handling very similar situations. So this is about as collaborative as we can be. If, I agree, and it's very unfortunate that this is happening in the summer, right before the beginning of school. And I understand too that, you know, we are experiencing some more COVID-19 positive cases here in Union County. And what our plan is to do with that is to have daily check-ins with the health and safety experts, as well as the Union County officials. Consultation with them, any decisions to change our plan, to go to our hybrid option, which we would have as our more restrictive plan if this community became a yellow community as opposed to a green community as it currently is. And then, of course, red. Hopefully, that does not happen because that would mean that there's such a resurgence of the district that we have further restrictions. So it has not been an easy task for anybody, and it's, but it's important because this is for our kids, and it is for our staff and our students. And I do want to thank the administrators who have been working on this plan, not just once I took my position, but also prior to that, to do the best that they can with the limited information that they do have. And our community should know that it's going to be a difficult choice for families, and we know that. Information about the LASD school is going to be available, if not already. If you've seen some of the information on our website, the commitment signup will occur. The process for enrolling is to simply add your child's name and the grade level, and the guidance counselors will reach out to the children starting August 13th to begin to enroll them, and that would involve conversation or a meeting, which can be virtual, with the student to match what their courses needs are. So if they have a high school schedule, what classes would they be taking in the e-school that they're already rostered for? So that process will take, so the students, if everybody completes that survey that wants to commit to it, that will occur on the 13th, if they get their submissions in. We will be able to make sure that the kids are ready to start on August 20th. So that's a bit of a backend process that has to happen with our guidance counselors, that they will be reaching out. They like the teachers that don't work over the summertime, so we are shifting their schedules to be able to accommodate the parents who certainly have a lot of questions. When the students are in e-school, they do get district technology. They can use their own, but they do get district technology. They have access to a teacher who will be monitoring and providing instruction. It is 100% virtual, and it's asynchronous, which means that students can log in and complete their work when they want to. They don't have a fixed time. But it would be recommended that parents set up a structure for them within the home. Once we know how many kids are going to e-school, then we would be able to know what our staffing would be in terms of Lewisburg Area School District teachers. And I want to reinforce that the community's confidence and faith in the teachers has come through loud and clear. And, you know, we will work diligently to make sure that you continue to have your children educated by our teachers. And a couple other things I just wanted to share, you know, to clarify, masks are required all the time by the students. The staff will have face shields, but they will also have masks when they're in close proximity. And some of this has to do with making sure that the kids can understand them, that they can hear them, and also with our early literacy learners and our primary grades to make sure that they are able to receive the education and instruction that they're going to get from their teachers. So that in terms of mask and breaks, they will be outside. They'll be scheduled and structured. E-school will have a rotating schedule of when students will be out there because we naturally don't want everybody occupying the designated space at the same time, so that will be set up. As I mentioned, we'll have daily check-ins to monitor the conditions here in Union County and the region. And decisions, it's important to know that we are planning for if we do need to move to our hybrid, which would just have elementary students in and secondary students in in a remote virtual instruction. We are planning for what we need to make sure we have in place for that to happen smoothly. And many of those things have already occurred through the spring and into next year, but we do want to make sure that the students are having the same kind of educational experience with their teachers as they would have had if none of this was going on. So for our secondary students, in middle school and high school, they will follow their bell schedules and have class every day. We are in the process of reviewing a video conferencing policy, which will give us guidance and parameters around how these tools can be used and assessing which ones are really the most appropriate for an educational setting because we do want to make sure that our students and our staff know what the expectations are and that the teachers, you know, can seamlessly manage their class by doing it in a virtual environment. So all of those things are happening. I hope that we don't end up in a situation where we need to go to a different model, especially in everybody virtual model, because that means the conditions have changed in the county. But if we do what we need to do in terms of good hand hygiene, keep our distance from one another, and certainly wear a mask whenever we're out in public, we're going to mitigate that, and that's not just in school, but it's also what we do when we're out in the community. And that's the most important thing. I think that's a good takeaway. So again, we're consulting daily with the local experts, and, you know, we're monitoring the situation. And if we need to make some adjustments, we will make adjustments, and we're considering everything that we need to have in place in order to do that smoothly.
So before us, we have a motion to, I'm sorry, we don't have a motion. Looking for a motion to move to approve the health and safety plan as presented.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Heath, seconded by Mrs. Clark. Any discussion?
Yeah, a couple of just things maybe the board would like to discuss. So, for example, we have the clause in here in our ruling document that if we have enough students, at what point will that be known? Because that may impact people's decision to go e-school if they can have LASD teacher. And if they can have an LASD teacher, will it be synchronous?
Okay, good question. So what we would do, we have a survey out just right now gauging how many people are considering in-person and e-school. And also transportation, because we did ask if it's possible for parents or kids to transport themselves. It certainly alleviates our bus. So that closes on Monday. And by Tuesday, I'll be able to work with the principals and Ms. Moser on which teachers. We're working with the association on which teachers would be selected to be pulled to do the e-school. The official registrations will be due on the 13th, and that's so that the counselors have enough time to process with each of the families. So once that commitment happens on the 13th, or that's the closing day of the 13th, then, you know, we'll know before that. So there may be revised class lists coming forward. As, you know, principals certainly wanted to get the information out to the parents who have committed to in-person instruction or getting a number of questions, so there may be some revisions to that. So we will be able to notify the community on Tuesday that there will be an LASD teacher that will be available for their students. In terms of it being synchronous, the way the curriculum is developed in the accelerated education program, it doesn't need to be synchronous as it's self-paced with the students. But the teacher would be monitoring, and the teacher would also set up sessions with the students. And because it doesn't necessarily have to be a particular time, the teacher could work with the students and their families on what would be an appropriate time. We know that, and it might be a couple of sessions because we may need something a little bit more so in the evening or a different time when parents could be available to help their younger children. So, you know, they definitely will get instruction, and the teacher will also be able to do, bring some more what he or she might have more than done with the classroom to the online experience. So, you know, it would look different, and I think if we can have one of our teachers there able to do it, it would certainly be a much better experience for the students and for the parents as well.
15 to 20% of our student body is 300 to 400 students, and you have five business days between the deadline and the day that school would start. Is that going to be enough time to process all of those course requests?
It will be, and that's why we have, once, when the counselors get, once they know these classes they want the kids registered for, they just enter them into the master software and then just click a couple buttons and put the kids are in the class. So from that end, it's just a lot of manual entry, but they will be able to do that.
In the model where we go hybrid, if we spread students out across all buildings, where do the secondary teachers teach?
So they would still be in their classrooms, or they would be in different locations within the building. We're asking for teachers to come in just so that they can demonstrate, if it's a lab in a science class is a great example, they can demonstrate that lab that otherwise they wouldn't be able to do safely in their homes. So some classes that really don't require specialized equipment, they may be in a different location, some of our conference rooms and other areas, but between the the buildings and spreading the kids out, we know we have greater social distancing. We certainly have space like this, which isn't available in our We certainly have space like this, which isn't available in our other schools. And, you know, our younger students, of course, anybody can catch this virus. I'm not a believer in, you know, some of the information unfortunately that's out there in the media. We know that they can get sick. We also know they may be not symptomatic, but they can, you know, bring this home to older siblings or their parents. We want to be mindful of that. Younger kids tend to be more compliant, so making that time to stop and let's wash our hands before we eat, after we're finished, you know. And of course, there's all the things that you do normally, where we sing a song or we do something that makes it a pleasurable activity for the students. All of that is, you know, part of what that elementary experience would look like, and that would be consistent.
There's, in the plan, there's the call for having room-based filtration, and I'm wondering if it's been able to get a quote or secure those?
So we are in the process of having Siemens assess our current HVAC system to see if we upgrade the filters on our current system in all four of the schools. How far can we do that with just the condition of that equipment right now? The high school's different, it's a newer building than the three other schools. So we will take it to its capacity, but of course, if we're increasing airflow, we're also increasing electrical costs. We want to look at it being at some point where even our air handlers only have one, the fans only have one setting. So how far they can take it and still have air flowing through them is another thing that they'll be assessing for us. The portable HEPA filters, we're getting quotes for them now to have them purchased.
My concern with approving this in its current form is it almost requires us to approve the face shields, which are lower on the agenda. So I almost feel like we have to move the desk guards, the desk guards. I feel like we may need to move the desk guard item up before we can approve this because this requires some action. So I motion to discuss the desk guards prior to finishing the health and safety plan.
Sure, with the board's permission, I don't see any reason why we can't flip-flop the agenda, discuss that if you'd like. So we will table that for right now. We come back to the health and safety plan with the board's permission. I will move the PPE purchases item, letter D on the agenda, to the first agenda item.
Motion to approve, motion to split the PPE from the Mr. Psychizer and the desk guards.
Sorry, the motion is to split those items.
Motion is to split the session of items, yeah.
Okay, is there a second to split?
A second.
Moved by Dr., seconded by Dr. DeSaro to split the items, to have them voted upon separately. We will take a look at the bathroom cleaner quote first, which is the first item from Hilliard's Cleaning Resources. John, do you want to speak about it?
Sure. I would ask that you approve the quote from Hilliard this evening for these bathroom machines. We were actually looking at these late last year, early this year, even before the pandemic. And it just makes bathroom cleaning a whole lot faster and a whole lot more thorough. So we would ask that you approve this this evening so that these can be obtained as quickly as possible.
So move, second.
Moved by Dr. Blonsky, seconded by Dr. Zimmerman. Any discussion?
I'm going to echo the question that came in in one of the comments. How quickly will we get this equipment?
They are currently on order, so we are hoping to have them. Unfortunately, the desk guards appear to be arriving on the 21st. We tried to get them sooner. Unfortunately, we can't. You know how it is. So, and I believe the bathroom cleaners are also on order. I'm not sure on their arrival date, but I believe they are coming in the near future. We hope to have them before school starts.
Are we discussing whether we delay if they don't get here in time?
Well, since we separated it, we're going to hold off on the discussion on the desk guards. So let's just take a vote on the bathroom cleaner, because that's the, it was the request of the board to split those. So we'll hold the discussion on the desk guards. Right now, we have a motion and a second for the bathroom cleaner quote. Follow-up, roll poll vote please on just the bathroom cleaner quote.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unziger, DeSaro?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brous?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fencer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so with the approval of that, we will now move on to the sandbox desk guard quote. John, I'll turn it back over to you.
Yes, the quote is for the desk guards for all students along with extra clips and extra adhesive tape from the sandbox sign company. We would ask that you approve this this evening. They are on order. We have asked them to expedite the shipping. Right now, they basically have to replace the order and we're, you know, they're manufacturing them and they have to ship them from California. We hope to have, right now, they're estimated to arrive 21st, but hopefully the truck will avoid the speed limit and get here sooner. We would ask that you approve this this evening.
Is there a motion to approve the desk guard quote?
So, so move.
Moved by Mrs. Brous.
Second.
Second, seconded by Mrs. Clark. Any discussion?
What happens if they don't arrive on time? Then what's our plan?
I can answer that. So what's also on the agenda tonight is a revision to the school calendar so that we would have, we know that the students miss their orientation to go to the middle school and also to the high school. So we would ask the board to consider allowing just the students who are the first, this is their first time in any of the four buildings, to have that single day. And then they would have the following day off. And then on that Friday, the 21st, we would bring the other students in. And then Monday would be the first full day that all kids are in. So we would be at half capacity in some cases, but certainly much less capacity. The first day of school is a day of a lot of orientation. The intention is to spend most of either of those two days really reviewing, modeling, and teaching students what the expectations are going to be in the school. So that is anywhere from where our masking break location would be, how we're going to navigate around the classrooms, what lunch would be like, washing hands, making sure they're very aware of the hand sanitizing stations that are now mounted in all of the rooms. So instruction in terms of we're not opening up the book or starting on chapter one that day. And that's a pretty standard practice for the first day of school all the time. It's really a lot of class meetings, routine procedures. Naturally, we're not going to have class meetings because we can't, we wouldn't want to put that many students into the auditorium at one time, a whole grade level, or one of those spaces. But it's the orientation essentially to school. And the desk shields are just one more mitigation that if the desk shields, some school districts are getting them, some districts are not. They don't insulate you and make you completely safe. However, if a student sneezes or coughs, because students will sneeze or cough, it's good to have that extra protection around them. The masks are the best thing that they should have, and that's what they will have. And they will have that all the time, but it just allows the students to have that extra measure of not just being protected by anyone else, but also anything that they make smell, you know, as they're coughing or sneezing. It also gives them a sense of you have this bubble that's now around you. That's just how we have to operate right now. So it gives them that, you know, ability to recognize that I need to be away from somebody where I would normally get very close to them so that they can start to develop that, you know, sense of consciousness with that. So we don't, and our recommendation wouldn't necessarily be to delay school until these came in because the masks are here. If parents or students come without masks, we already have 10,000 masks on hand. So anybody that doesn't have one or loses it or something happens to it in the course of the day, we have replacement masks and they'll be in all of the classrooms. And of course, social distancing will be in, of course, you know, just from the beginning as we're orienting students to procedures for this year.
I have a question. Do we have a general idea of how many kids are attending in person? To know how many desk guards we do need? So we're not, I mean, this seems like if we don't need them, that is a complete waste of money. I don't foresee another use for them in the future.
I think they may be a complete waste of money in general. None of us right now are sitting in the airspace defined by this sandbox desk guard. Right? If you chat on the phone or anything, the mask is the best thing and cleaning up the air. So if we're talking about a way to spend $57,000 and we're talking about an investment in the future, I'd really like us to talk about the air filtration system and the HDA improvements. And I'd also like us to think about putting this money towards indoor spaces that would be better for unmasking while it's still hot and humid, which according to the ALMINAC is going to be for a while yet. So I would say we could take this money and apply it to maybe a rooftop chiller for the Lindtown cafeteria and Kelly Kepfer inventory or something like that. Because kids are going to need a place when it's pouring outside to be far away from each other. That's cool. One of my concerns and the reason I want to talk about this is because in the health plan, we're not allowing children in the library in Kelly. The library is only air-conditioned at Kelly for kids to access easily, other than the trailers off inside.
The Kepfer inventory is air-conditioned at Kelly.
Have you been to a music concert today?
Sure. I understand it is technically air-conditioned.
And the library, to clarify, we're going to have a different procedure for kids to be able to check out books, to have them peruse the collections. The opportunity for a lot of touching to occur can happen. So kids will be able to sign up for the books they want and they'll be delivered to them. And then we quarantine the books when they return. So they'll still have access to books. We're not taking that away. Our online catalog will be used.
I have, I have no concern about.
Kids will be in there, but that might be another instructional space that we can use for something besides the library. So that, the space isn't being wasted.
I agree with Erin. I have a hard time spending this much money on something that isn't in my mind gonna. If people are wearing masks and washing hands and distancing another piece of plastic in front of them, I just don't see that preventing that much more spread. That would be, I think, I think there are places where it might help for the secretaries, things like that, yes. But I think to do it in all the classrooms for all the kids, I just think it's a waste of money.
I want to second what Tara said in the first place, which is the quantity over 2100. When we know maximum, we have 1,900 kids in the school and we already anticipate 15 to 20% held in a virtual educational situation. So I'd like to hear anybody else if they were able to watch the video and the, or read online about desk guards and their efficacy.
What I read did not indicate that anyone felt that that was a great mitigating factor. The one place where I feel like, when I think about when I taught in elementary schools, I could almost see them being used as a way to keep the kids really understanding their bubble. But older kids should understand social distancing. I mean, I'm not even saying that the smaller ones can't. But as I was trying to figure out where it might actually be helpful, that was the only space that I could really imagine, because this is what needs to happen. The masks are what need to happen.
It might also be helpful at a secondary level for a teacher if they're standing at, or like a podium talking. It would give another, you know, if they don't want to wear the face shield. But I just, again, I just.
So.
I don't like spending good money that we can't use again.
Maybe it would be helpful if we understood where the idea came from or why we thought it was a good thing.
I see. It was part of the layering idea. As the folks said, I think it was Eva and Arquise Anderson, you know, the masks, the desk guards, sort of things. It's like Swiss cheese, there are big holes things get through. But with multiple layers, the desk guards were seen to be another layer in addition to the masks, the face shields, the hand washing, you know, just an additional layer of support to help with mitigation. By itself, it's not, you know, the be-all and-all, but it was just thought to be another layer of protection for the students and staff. That was the thought process.
One additional concern just based on air flows through a room is you're putting up a bunch of things that essentially trap pockets of air. So, you know, it's a windbreak everywhere you can put it. And that will limit, in some places, we only have fans. Some places, we only have windows that just pipe to fans, and so you're definitely blocking the flow.
I would be concerned also that, I understand, I like the Swiss cheese analogy and I think it's really helpful. But this particular piece of cheese, as it were, I feel might give people the impression that they're protected and lead them to be careless with their masks or careless with their distancing. And it doesn't, it doesn't make those other mitigation factors unnecessarily. So I worry that it would create offsets of security that would event increased risk.
On the website, there's a different, I know the price goes up like a dollar each if you only order 500 or something. So for those few situations where this is potentially the right thing to do because kids are going to need things to do, so there may be some scenarios where you would like this to happen. The other reason I don't think you need them in this building is because this building is in a way where you can max out the filtration, right? We have much better HDA, keeping them at this here. What do you think, Lisa?
I agree. I think that it's a lot of money for something that, while I understand the layering, it's not really a proven success in preventing any of this. So I do have a lot of concerns about the amount of money being spent on something where it could go maybe toward the HEPA filters or some other ventilation systems. I would, I would definitely consider lowering the number and not going with the 2100, but perhaps 500, you know, that we could use in specific circumstances or specific buildings instead of trying to cover for every student plus.
And the quarters are basically put together with anti-duct tape. So it's a laser cut, three pieces of plexiglass that they give you the dimensions for and duct tape. So if we wanted to, these are something that.
I also have concerns about students having to carry them around with them and.
Especially since we know that they're carrying, you have.
Their backpacks as well. And what happens if they forget it? And they're the only student that doesn't have it in the classroom? And what kind of chaos will that cause for that one particular student? So I think there are a lot of mitigating factors. Again, I think the idea behind it is a great idea, but I'm just not sure if it's worth that volume of money.
What do we think about maybe, maybe just Kelly?
I mean, we reached out, the number here was gathered from four principals who wanted to make sure that we had enough for our students, plus a few extra in case, you know, somebody did forget their shield at home. Again, the thought process from the administration was that this was just an added layer of protection for the students.
A better layer would be a face shield because it protects your eyes from, right? The mask protects me from you, but the face shield protects, the mask protects you from my droplets, right? But the face shield protects me from their droplets. So a face shield would be much more effective. Not that everyone wants to run around with a face shield, but if we are weighing clean shield versus carrying around a plexiglass.
And just for the record, we were planning on using the care's money for these shields from the state and federal government, so.
Can't that also be used on the HEPA filters?
It can be used on a variety of things.
Can it be used on H-back improvements?
We'd have to dig into that. I think that's a possibility.
Nice feeling, Dick. There are so many other ways that we could actually have people feeling safer and better and keeping them safer than those because they just feel a little, like, and that feels, again, what Dr. Zimmerman said, there's a false sense of security there.
And if we can improve the air quality, right? If that money can go towards improving the air quality, that's going to have a much more substantial impact on everybody's health.
Forever.
Forever.
For ten years, yeah.
So since the order's already been placed. So since the order's already been placed, what is the feasibility of us being able to?
Uh, we can call them tomorrow and ask.
Yeah.
Um, by the way, uh, face shields would, uh, that are about, uh, good quality face shields that would last all year are about three to four weeks out if we order them, so.
So we have a motion and a second on the table. So uh, we can either rescind a motion if somebody feels so inclined, or we can continue to the voting, uh, which would be the next step here. So.
If we rescind the motion and re-motion, that's the word, um, to a lesser number of five hundred instead of twenty one hundred to be ordered. Second.
All right, so I have the motion, uh, the first motion pulled off to approve the item as presented. Um, is that worth looking into what the price break is before we make a decision?
There is a break at five oh one. If you go to the website.
Yeah.
So it has to be five oh one, but. I, what I would like, you know, to to still have the relationships with any vendors we might ever use is, you know, they might have five hundred on hand. And then if you get these and it looks like they are being utilized appropriately and they're sturdy and you think of a use for them greater than and say, oh, they're vaccinated, like, that, that's fine, or we just limit it to the current purchase, right? We could come back, you know, in two weeks and say, well, we could come back at the next meeting after next Thursday and say, actually, maybe we do want them for some unforeseen reason, but we haven't thought about it right now.
We can, if you want five hundred, we can order five hundred.
The thought is five oh one, just.
What's the break?
In five oh one or whatever the nearest price point is over five hundred. Okay.
I wonder that it.
So Lisa, your motion would include the flexibility for the administration to flex by one or two or a few, ju- just to take advantage of it.
The best price.
Which would also decrease the replacement, et cetera.
Yes.
And then anti-duct tape.
So I have a motion to decrease the amount of quantity to five hundred plus or minus one or two. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, if I'm Miss Stanton, any discussion? All right, roll call vote, please. Paula?
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Tplonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unziger-Pacero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
No.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
The difference in price is fifty cents each when you go from the number we have to just the five oh one, it is five oh one.
All right, so with that, uh, since we moved that to the first item, uh, we will now go back to the health and safety plan as our next item. We had the introduction of the item by Dr. Polenchak. Uh, so I will entertain a motion to approve the health and safety plan as presented.
So moved?
Moved by Mr. Rowe. Is there a second? Seconded by Mrs. Clark. Any discussion? Hearing none.
No, sorry, sorry. Correcting my thoughts. Um. I continue to feel concerned about where we are in Union County. I think that this plan um is very comprehensive and seems safe to the best of my knowledge. If we are really green, but I don't have a lot of confidence that we are really green here or that we should be. The cases are rising. I believe we have more cases now than we had when we were in the yellow designation. Um, all of the parents that I've been hearing from who have contacted me personally or through the comments or through social media have expressed significant concerns about sending their children to school. Um, and I think we've been doing a good job of listening to them, but I I I I do think that those views should be taken into account. So that, I guess what I'm saying is I, I think it's a good plan if, if, if we're green, but I don't think we're green.
And I think that that's where, I mean, we all have the understanding that, I mean, this could change tomorrow. I mean, we, I think we all are aware that, uh, obviously this entire time has been a very fluid situation. And, uh, you know, as Dr. Polenchak said earlier, uh, we will, you know, she will be in constant contact every single day with the, you know, with the Department of Health, with the local officials, uh, really getting a pulse of, you know, where are these numbers coming from? What is, you know, a number is a number, but where are these coming from? Is it one family? Is it spread out? You know, really getting a pulse of, uh, you know, that kind of information that that is uh very useful in making a determination. So again, I'd love to speak to that if you wanna address that. But, you know, also understanding that this plan, I mean, we're very aware that this plan could change at any point and and has changed, you know, with the, with PDE's guidelines that they've um released. You know, we continue to adapt the plan, continue to revise it. So, um, I agree with you. I mean, I think it's, it's difficult to make these decisions, which is, as I said in our last meeting, um, the frustration comes into play when, you know, we wanna wait as long as possible, but we can't wait as long as possible because we need to plan. So, you know, the longer we wait, the more we're able to accurately predict or see what's happening. But at the same time, the longer that we wait to approve something, um, it makes it harder to plan and makes it more difficult for parents. So, um, you know, that's just the the constant juggling that we've been in this whole time.
I just wanna confirm that we are not approving the document that starts with why students need to resume in first learning. We are only approving this document, right? So there, I only have a few edits. One is that, um, I do think we should specify where it says individual classrooms will have the filter, even a long conversation you just had. I think it, um, this is the bottom of page ten. We should actually specify that we, we don't just need individual classrooms and instructional spaces. Like, every needed classroom or some, some language that applies. We are, we're going to make sure that every instructional space that doesn't have proper air quality will have proper air quality. So my motion, my, actually, how do we, how do we do edits? We usually don't do, uh, we need to specify that.
Well, more than likely what will happen is this happening with all school districts. I can have that as, um, if the plan is approved by the board, you can give me another direction to then include that language. But for everything that we do, every time something changes, this plan comes back. So many school districts have already had to bring their plans back for revision, just like our athletic plan, when the masking or mitigation order came out about how many people could be in an outdoor space um in a gathering. So, you know, I suspect this will be a regular item showing up throughout the year. And of course, if our conditions change, everything that's, that's in place here for green, we would even review that to see if there's something we need to do in yellow. We only had our elementary kids in the school, so we would have to look at this again and add or maybe pull certain things out depending on the level of the student, so. And you're, what I understand you're saying is that you're just looking for any place where there are people that is a room that's used to, to make sure that we're, we're able to.
Yeah, we're gonna, and then at the same time, because of what we just did, we just have to say some students or some desks, actually, we're probably gonna have some desks will have these desk guards in place with not very student. Um, there's a, a kind of a question I think that needs to be specified. It, it implies, I understand, all students may be unmasked during their cafeteria time. The entire, obviously, to eat and drink.
To eat and drink. Any, anytime they get up to, and even there'd be new procedures for even how kids get up to throw out their trash or if they have to get a napkin, they have to be masked as soon as they're out of their seats. And, um, that, that part, and it's important to note too on the plan, the, the guiding questions all the way to the right, that's PDE's language. That's not ours. It's very hard to tell, looking at the plan, what the district added to it and what was the original PDE. And this is their template that we had to use. So, um, you know, that, that, I know doesn't make it very clear to somebody who wasn't real part of writing it. But, um, you know, those procedures, the schools right now are walking through all the things that they need to do and writing out step-by-step procedures that they'll have to work with the staff and then also show the students how to do that as well. But that can be shared, you know, in terms of the lunchroom procedures, you know, with the expectations with parents. Because they would know this.
So with the only one additional period for lunch, will we have enough um phase delivery? We can still maintain the cohorting concept, which is only certain groups of students end up together. Hopefully, just by class, maybe two classes at a time. Um, or the alternating idea of the classroom. I just, we might, I know this is a, this is a living document at this point, but we might wanna better specify that because it implies the cafeteria situation, you think of everyone unmasked, you know, when you would see any individuals closer than you might.
With the middle school, yes, we would, um, not the middle school, excuse me, the high school would with the additional period. Um, what we're working through now is what our actual spaces are and what the supervision of the students will be in terms of lunch, because our teachers do have a duty for your lunch period. Have that staff on hand. Um, we have to look at the existing aides or anybody else that can be in the supervision of children. Again, it can't just be an adult because we still have to follow the regulations of who is supervising students. So, um, the high school with that additional and they would, and they would have assigned seats. Now, high school kids, we're gonna let them pick their seats. You know, I mean, but this is the seat you sign up for and this is the one where you stay, which they naturally do. Kids tend to sit with the same groups of kids. We're not looking to separate them from their friends. And that's the last thing really we wanna do, because we want them to be able to, to socialize and and feel comfortable and have that sense of community in, in that setting. So we would know which kids are where anytime they're seated any place in the school. So we, one, they know, we know, and in the event that we do need to work with our local officials on who might have been in proximity of that student for how long, we can share that information with them.
You just made me think that we, can, can we hire people who are, or can we use volunteers, the voluntary reporters to supervise children?
Well, we, we wanna have a limit on how many, we are limiting volunteers in general with the helpers, but one, we can do it, but the one thing we have to keep in mind is the folks, because they're volunteers, they have to consistently be there, because the plan's built around someone coming. And then for whatever reason, they're not able to come that day, what, what's our backup plan? I, I mean, of course, it's, it's a wonderful solution, but, you know, we can look at how to do the system of that and, you know, just have additional volunteers to, in case somebody doesn't come. You know, that, that's, the employees, we pretty much expect them to be there every day. Um, unless they're ill. And I know the same thing can happen for a volunteer, but, you know, we, just as when we don't have teachers, we have backup plans for what happens. We just need to have something in place for that.
Does anyone have a concern about the minimum three feet, page twenty two?
Yes, I have written that down. Every place else it says six feet, but on page twenty two it says three feet.
So on the left where it says, oh, sorry, page twenty two. Okay. So where it says that, so class sizes, we're looking at, we calculated what each of the um, the classroom capacities are for the number of desks. That's about it. From six to five and a half to five to four and a half to four and, and what that distance would look like. There keep, there may, we would look to rearrange classrooms into different spaces. But then the library and some of those other rooms would come into effect, because depending upon the class, the equipment that's in the class, we may not be able to, um, move that equipment to a larger classroom. So that that would really be in a limited area. If we wanna commit to six feet, we can commit to six feet, but to keep in mind too that as research is coming out with, with the virus and just in general what happens with aerosolized um particles in the air, it could be that six feet is, certainly it's a good distance, but we don't know. Do we need more with less feet? Okay, we, we don't know that part yet. Six feet is the, the recommendation coming from CDC. Um, there have been revised recommendations, Pennsylvania Department of Education says we're feasible. Um, you know, we're working with the best that we can, but with a number of moving bodies in the building. So that's all the more reason to make sure that masking is enforced, because that's the one thing that we know somebody can control is having a mask on the face, but we can't necessarily have control over everybody's distance from all other individuals at every given time. We can set it up for that to happen. But we can't control the human actor and, and mistakes where, you know, just kids forgetting for a second. Um, or a teacher needing to come closer to a student to intervene with something um or, or provide some help and support. So those are the realistic challenges that we face when we're looking at opening schools and if, you know, that's something that the board would want to see is a hard line commitment to six feet. And, you know, that's certainly something we can do in there, but we, we may need to seriously modify and then what some courses that are offered and, um, relocate, I mean, which we will do anyway, but we're gonna look at relocating things even more creatively to make sure that, um, students are at that six feet length of the desks.
Could you add some language in there where it has to be below six feet for right now, that it's not longer than fifteen minutes, because it's the sustained exposure to, it's not, you know, if you pass someone in the hall, you're not gonna probably get COVID.
Right.
If you sit and talk to someone for fifteen, twenty minutes, the, the changes go up. So, um, maybe something about that, rather than just the distance, but also the time exposure.
I also feel like this, this particular item on page twenty two is referring to the number of individuals in classrooms. So it does seem reasonable to me to try to set the class sizes to ensure six feet of separation to the greatest extent possible in terms of where their desks are and where they are basically stationed. I agree with Tara. When, you know, when, when a teacher needs to come closer to a student or two students need to work together, that's gonna happen and there should be a time limit on that. But in terms of, you know, sort of the basis where, where kids are put, you know, where their assigned seats are, those should be six feet.
And just still have the, how, um, to the greatest extent possible. So the language still allows for those times you were describing. Um, on, on page twenty five, this is, you know, just like my tent tree, right, so you pick up little things. After it says fever-free for seventy-two hours, this is the only place where it doesn't say without fever-reducing medication. Every other place, it's, it's very specifically explicit about without fever-reducing medication. I think that's important, because you can drive down to fever-free sex, just, yeah.
Tell us, man.
So, just to be explicit there. And since, I had a question just about the parents have to record their, the daily health check or some questionnaire or whatever. Is that gonna be through an app or what's the reporting mechanism or the recording, recording or?
We're asking them to maintain that, you know, not to send their students. We know that there's some parents that have, um, you know, more challenging situations where they feel they, they may not have a childcare option at that time, or, you know, they're, they're hourly workers and, you know, looking at the benefit of sending my child to school maybe not well versus not having pay for that time, because they wouldn't have that opportunity to make that up in any way. Um, we know that that, you know, does occur. It happens in every school. Our plan with that is, as, you know, the, with, with the small community, the nurses certainly know, the teachers certainly know, some of the families where those struggles are. We make, we're not officially doing the monitoring, but we're gonna keep an extra eye on those children and make sure that if they start to need to present with symptoms. And again, bearing in mind, these symptoms look like all kinds of other symptoms of illness. It can be, you know, just the regular flu, a cold, a strep throat, sinus infection, allergies. So just because a child is sizzling or coughing or even has a fever, it's not, doesn't mean necessarily that potentially it could be COVID, but it does mean that they might need some medical attention and at least to know what is causing this for them.
I had a comment about, on the language about masking on page thirty one. In the narrative that accompanies this document, the, the description of mask breaks is very clear and I, I think quite appropriate. And you were very clear in the way that you spoke about that here tonight. But I feel like this plan, which is what we improve, um, needs stronger language. Um, it's still the last box on page thirty one. It simply says that students are required to wear masks at all times except for drinking or during structured designated mask break. I would really like to see a sentence out there that clarifies that those mask breaks will be taken outdoors or in large controlled indoor spaces.
Yeah, I have the same note.
On page 14, the outdoor spaces are addressed, and I just was thinking about a couple of the comments that came up. And about the fact that we do in the plan, outdoor spaces are specified for in particular gym, music, chorus, for obvious reasons. But then it also says that there will be opportunities for other outdoor instruction as well. So I'm glad that that's there. Thank you.
And I think we also just have to acknowledge that these are both living documents. So.
Any other discussion? All right. So we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please, Paul.
Mr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Encinger Fisero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. We'll move on to the instructional minutes template.
So the instructional minutes template is also a document that needs to be submitted to the Pennsylvania Department of Education. This is the document that explains how the district, if it is using any kind of remote learning, anything other than in-person learning, how it will count for the required 180 days of instruction, 900 elementary hours, 990 secondary hours. So we list on here with our start and end date. There is a revision to the calendar that would occur for the stagger of the first time in the building students, which would be the one three, sixth and ninth grade students. And so we might want to put this aside until we look at the calendar because the board would first want to approve that. I think it's just, I apologize in that I did not notice that we would have something that otherwise we don't yet.
So again, like we did before with the board's permission, now move the revised calendar to the current item. Mrs. Fetter?
Thank you. When we began a lot of our prepping planning relative to the school year, it was indeed recognized by all four building administrators that the transition years, students had not had any opportunity to come in and acclimate to the building, appreciate what is singularly and unique about each of our four buildings. And our students as well as our parents voiced the wish that they had had that chance to become more familiar and become accustomed to what they would be dealing with. And so we began to talk about this proposed calendar change that you have in front of you. And that is to take our two opening days, the Thursday and Friday in that week of August, Thursday 20th of August and Friday 21 of August. Take Thursday 20 of August and bring just pre-K and K, grade three for Lindtown, grade six for middle school and grade nine for high school. Student body moving in in those grades on that day. Opportunity again to work with staff, opportunity to become familiar, opportunity to do some orienting and some acclimating. The grades that would not be those transition grades, and I can probably pull those off too, one, two, three at Kelly, five at Lindtown, seven, eight at middle school and 10 through 12 at high school, would come in for the Friday date and have their first opportunity to see all our procedures, appreciate all the changes in routine, have staff be able to model and mentor and encourage and support, all that will be necessary with the start of school. In order to make that calendar adjustment, each of the grade students, all 1900 plus Leesburg students, would be one day short of 180 student dates. So the calendar in front of you takes our final end date. Keeping in mind, that's always tentative to a winter weather and any other circumstances. But it moves it from the Thursday half day in that first week of June to adding the Friday. And the thought was that was prudent, that was certainly well within our ability to do so. And what we gain from affording the transition grades as well as all students, as well as staff, to work with what will be required of them in those opening days would be something that we could bring forward for everyone to address a lot of what we've heard this evening as well in terms of concerns and questions raised. So that's the proposed school calendar change in front of you this evening.
Is there a motion to approve the revised 2020-21 district calendar?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Brown, seconded by Dr. Jablonski. Any discussion?
Will we still have the greeting crew in the high school that's the upperclassmen that greet the night brings?
Yes.
The link crew activity that you're speaking of, they are working for the most creative way to do some virtual, to do some appropriate ways in which, yes, that very important piece remains in place.
Any other discussions? Want to do this by roll call? Please, Paul.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Encinger Fisero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. And with that piece approved, again, we will go back to the instructional minutes template.
Okay. So, and also in this plan, so we have the revised, the revised calendar is existing. The days are still the same, but I wanted to make sure that that was clear. Students would have an early dismissal, as we've stated, after lunch on Wednesdays. That is 11:30 for secondary, 12:30 for our elementary students. And in order to recapture that approximate three hours of time, and it's not exactly three hours of time because there are passages of class and there may be some non-instructional activities that occur that are part of the school day, but don't count towards the minutes that are required. We would ask that there, where our plan is for teachers to develop a set of different activities and assignments, some of which could be remote. We have a lot of online instructional technologies such as iXL, Khan Academy. Some of those things for our students that particularly are older ones, you know, would be able to handle on their own. For younger students, it would be a combination of something with technology as well as something that's a take home because we know that there are some limits with that in terms of what students can do autonomously. That work would be returned. It would, again, approximate that amount of time in a rotation. So the elementary teachers, it's much easier for them to calculate what that work would be like because the students are with them the whole time. We would work with our secondary students or teachers to do something by department. So that that's occurring that way so that a high school student wouldn't get, let's say, four three-hour assignments coming from each of their subject areas. And then they would submit that work, but it would not count as homework. Homework is still something that's separate and apart and homework should be structured for a particular purpose. This is instruction of kids and practice activities, something that they can do that they would otherwise be doing in class if they were in class. So this would be calculated for the student's grade. It would be counted as either their classwork assessments. However, the teachers have their grade book set up that can vary from grade level in the classroom, separate and apart from homework. And then we would, at that point, assume that they did do that instruction in that other environment that was outside of the school. And at the bottom, there's a sample calendar of what a day would look like in a glance. And it's about three hours in between. But again, keeping in mind announcements and different things like that that happen during non-instructional, so it's not an approximate three, so I don't want to say three specifically. Calculate that depending upon how also the schedules within the buildings are also being adjusted to allow for some of the things that now need to occur that will take just a little bit more time and a time away from instructional time that are important to do so that students are having a positive experience in school.
All right. So do I have a motion to approve instructional minutes template as presented? Moved by Dr. Jablonski. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rowe. Any discussion?
I just want to make it clear from a parent's standpoint that this is just not going to be a packet given similarly to what, yeah, good. And because I, if it's something educational, I'm all for it. If it's just another thing for the kids to do, I can't approve it. Yeah, we will. Thanks.
A little typo there. It looks like the high schoolers are going to school and telling them to take care of themselves.
Nice.
I'm checking under my head.
It's on the winds. I'm sure that'll be fine.
There, I'm checking.
I'm okay with that.
All right. Again, I'm going to do this by roll call. Please, Paul.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Encinger Fisero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mr. Brother?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Sorry. So we did the revised calendar already, skipping down the agenda. We did the PPE purchases already. We will next move on to the personnel report with the revised personnel report that is at our seat. Currently, Mr. Moser, anything to add?
No. Again, you have the copy in front of you. We've moved on resignations of staff. We have a new hiring there for you, listing both a professional staff member as well as learning support. Some extra compensatory positions are outlined for you there and an additional volunteer. I will note that this personnel report is typically our longest one in a given year as we do list our substitute teachers, our bus drivers and the various categories that you can see. So it is more extensive than typical, but it does reflect the current personnel activity.
All right. This item normally falls under our consent agenda. Since it's standing alone, I'm still going to do a roll call vote. Please, Paul.
Dr. Encinger Fisero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. And then, or before you have the four minutes, again, normally falling under our consent agenda. Being a special meeting tonight, it is a standalone item for your review there. This is something I can take by voice vote. If there is a motion, don't move. Moved by Dr. Jablonski?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Fisero. Any discussion? All right. All in favor of approving the four minutes from the July 16th, say aye.
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 Post. Motion carried. We will move on to director's comments. Ms. Stanton, I'll start with you.
Ms. Stanton, I can all look back at you all the time. You know, and I thank Dr. Palantak and the administrators. You know, this hasn't been easy and know that you are doing an awful lot of work that we don't see and that the community doesn't see and that you've been doing that all spring and all summer. And that, Dr. Palantak, you got to July 1 and walked into this. And it's a lot. It's a lot for superintendents and administrators who have been in their districts and have been there for a long time. So I appreciate that and I'm sorry, but that's your welcome to the board. And I just want to say that all of the things that, you know, we approved as a group and that, you know, I can speak for myself personally, that I thought long and hard about before voting. You know, I, I have a daughter and I'm sending her. She made that decision because she's a senior in high school. But I, it's very important to me that all of our children are safe and that we're able to keep them that way. And that we hold ourselves accountable for that, that all of us do that. That's important.
You know that? Excellent work and keep it up for superintendent and every single principal. Things you never thought you'd have to do and you're getting them done. Thank you.
I'll echo those sentiments. And I'd say also that I appreciate it and have heard from people in the community who appreciate the many town halls, the most recent one with the panel of health experts, but also all the ones that you did, Dr. Palantak, at the different building levels. People came out of those still with questions, but you offered so much information and I'm grateful. And I know a lot of people in the community are grateful for that. To all the parents who are still, you know, listening in, it's just such an incredibly frightening and difficult time and these are impossible decisions. And I hear you and I'm with you and I wish I could fix it.
I also thank Dr. Palantak and the administrators, Kathy Moser, principals, everyone that's been involved in all of the work that it's taken to get us to this point. It's unfortunate that the public isn't able to see in the background all of the work, all of the meetings, everything that has to take place. And to think that all of this work isn't, isn't occurring is a little frustrating to hear because the hours that have gone into putting this plan in place are astronomical. And I just want to reinforce to the public that might be listening that this was not taken lightly by any means. Many, many hours, many discussions, many, many experts pulled into these discussions. The decisions weren't made lightly. And I think that Dr. Palantak and her team really should be commended for the work that they did for this district. So thank you very much.
I did owe everyone's comments. To anyone that's still listening, please help spread the word that the information is out there. It's on the website. It's available by phone or email. So call. Please be patient. I mean, Ms. Moser, Mr. Fairchild and Dr. Palantak have worked numerous hours. I know how many hours I've put in thinking about this, reading information. You know, how many hours that other school board members have in personal conversations with some of them as well as executive sessions and meetings. To hear the comments, it is, it's a little disheartening because a lot of us have kids. I'm just as worried about sending my kids as you guys are. If I had all the answers, I wouldn't be sitting here. You know, we would be home already. It's almost 9 o'clock. Again, just have a little patience. We're trying. We do have a brand new superintendent that walked into this. She's done amazing. I mean, the fact that she knows as much about our district already as she does, it's phenomenal. So we can be very thankful that she's leading our ship right now. I don't know what all the other districts are doing. I'm worried about our district. But we're trying to open school. We're trying to do what's best for kids. And right or wrong, that's what we're doing. We don't have control over what the Department of Education tells us. We answer to them. We answer to our governor. So please be mindful of that on some of your comments. Again, get the facts before, you know, spreading rumors, please. If you don't know the facts, keep asking the questions. I promise you'll get the answers at some point. I am very confident in the woman sitting next to me and the woman sitting next to me and Mr. Fairchild and all of our principals. This is unprecedented times. We can't, you know, sit and expect things that We can't, you know, sit and expect things that aren't available to us yet, so I hope that everyone's staying safe, and it's just nice to be back in person a little bit and see other board members and get back to a little bit of normal because that's what we need for our kids too. So just remember that your kids are watching you, and we're a great community, and we can get through this.
Mrs. Brown, anything to add?
Yes, I'd like to do what everybody else has said. PD recommend, you know, demanded we had a plan, this is the plan we came up with. It's not perfect, and it's probably going to change till school starts or after school starts, but at least we have one intact that we can work with, adjust it, fine-tune it, so to speak. I have a granddaughter going into ninth grade this year, and so I'm concerned too. I do want to clarify why I voted no for the five hundred desk shields. I feel we should have them all for all of the kids. I worry about that. It's an added precaution, another step to take. I really am concerned that we aren't doing it for the whole district. So that's why I, I voted no for five hundred, because I feel we need them for all, every student. Thank you.
Mrs. Moser, anything to add?
Yes, I'm going to take my moment, and thank you for expressed support tonight, board members, that means a lot. I'm going to speak on behalf of building administrators who aren't physically present, but many of whom are tuned in tonight. They appreciate hearing that voice of support and that accolade for all of their hard work, and we do appreciate it, and we have found Dr. Pollentock, in one short month, amazing to work with, and we're so pleased to have you here and your guidance to our efforts at this time. Thank you.
John?
I agree with everything that's been said, nothing further.
Aaron?
So I want to remind everyone that the administrators and the teachers and all the people in our district that you have always had a lot of praise for are still the same people, except Dr. Pollentock, who had to come into this, and she's receiving praise from the people that you've always believed in. I hope that you can also find some grace to believe in, in what she's doing and leading the district. So I do want to clarify, the reason that I brought up, for example, the desk guards is because I do think there are things that the district has wanted to do for years, and we may now have an opportunity, unfortunately in crisis, to make those changes. For example, E-check improvements, hair quality improvements, maybe we, and it doesn't preclude us from buying the desk guards at the next meeting, as I mentioned, but I think if you watch the video, they are a little bit wobbly, and I mean, they don't look, you know, I need to see one. I also want to say, while some, some parents' comments may look antagonistic, I think it's really, really important that all comments are heard, and I'm really appreciative that we get to see everything because it's, it's just a great way to understand where the community is. I think people came out very much in favor of masking, I think that was a really important understanding for the board to say, yes, this is, I mean, that was going to be in the plan anyway, there was no question, but it's just reaffirming the actions that we were planning on taking. Some of the requests about virtual or e-school, that prompts the question to be answered in a, maybe in a more full way, maybe gets its own page on the website. And so I do think, keep those comments coming. They don't have to be an email, there are some great web forums and Survey Monkey out there so they can be all accumulated into one place so that we can keep track of those. And just a little grace and generosity right now, I took notes on everything that we had read out because I do have concern that we make sure everyone is heard and feels heard and feels that if they do take the time to put in their comments and to contact the board of the district, that those comments will be addressed. So thank you, everyone who took the time. I love people who include links and articles, that's just fantastic, so keep it up.
Cory?
Not a lot to say that hasn't been said, I reiterate what everybody else has said. I'm hopeful that those who expressed distress tonight in their comments can eventually, sooner rather than later, come to appreciate exactly how much work the staff and the administrators and the leaders of the district have been doing. I know all of us in this room are very aware of that. I understand that people who are never in this room, it seems different, but if you do what, follow the advice you've been given, keep asking questions, you'll get your answers, and hopefully you'll come to understand that there actually has been a ton of work done for a good reason. You also have to take into consideration that there's, we live in a time where there are more questions than answers. Nobody in this room has all the answers, nobody outside of this room has all the answers right now. We're tasked to come up with a plan to address as many, to educate as many kids as possible in the best way possible. There's no way to tailor a plan like that for two thousand students to address every individual concern. The only thing we're trying to do right now is put the information out, give parents the information they need to be able to make an informed decision for their family and whatever their personal issues are. Hopefully, hopefully we've done that. If you're not to that point, keep asking, we'll give you the information.
Dr. Pollentock? And I don't believe I have anything else to add, other than just echoing the sentiments that have been shared already. At this point, I will move on to citizens' comments to the board on non-agenda items. Are there any comments at this point?
Hi, Matt Ferrin, District Resident, two one six North Fifth Street, Lewisburg, and also here for the Standard Journal. Before we get to press time, which I guess would be after you adjourn, or at least that's the way it has been, I just have a couple of homework-type questions for John and Kathy Moser here. John, how many folks were on Zoom tonight?
It looked like we were upwards of over two hundred and fifty.
Two hundred and fifty, oh, thank you. And Kathy, I'm in task with coming back with, you know, what day does school open? And we've had a change to the calendar, could you just repeat that, please?
Sure. Thursday, August twenty. If you are pre-K, K, four, six, nine. The transition grades to each building, man. Those students will come that day. They will not come the following day. The following day, all the rest of the K twelve grades will have their first day by staggering the start, addressing more of an effort to help all students acclimate to coming back to school. As a result of each student coming up one day short of one eighty, we've taken the end date on our calendar and helped me here, Thursday the fourth, I believe, becomes Friday the fifth, if I'm careful to say date and day correctly, will extend on the end of our calendar, which is a Lewisburg School District, that we take when we need to cover weather or any other reasons why we need to adjust school calendar. So we'll be adding Friday, June five, as our final date.
June two more.
No, that's very great, every time that the last time, John. All right.
All right, okay, thank, yeah, thank you, Kathy. And I want to thank the directors tonight for their fine comments as you wrapped up. I mean, I can foresee that as a separate story that stands alone. So that's all I have for now, and Doctor, I'd like to get with you for a moment afterward, if that's okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Any other comments to the board on non-agenda items? All right, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
John?
Moved by Mrs. Clark, seconded by Dr. Jablonski, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Meeting adjourned.